Hello and welcome to the 5th grade waste presentation for going green. This graph shows of how much waste is in the world and the country with the least amount of waste, percentage of the world, is Turkey with 3% of the waste. And none other than the USA with 32% of the world.
Sadly, America's the worst about wasting food. Forty percent of our food can be recycled. I mean, we waste forty percent of our food and that adds up to forty-five billion dollars in total food waste. Every year, America throws away enough plastics and spoons and utensils to stretch around the equator 300 times. That adds up to three pounds that is wasted per person each day. As a result, the world's air is being polluted and landfills are being overflowed.
The question that guided our whole research is what can we do about waste at PDS to help reduce the problems that poses our world?
Elementary schools produce an excessive amount of waste. One lunchroom can produce enough trash to reach taller than the highest buildings in the world. What can we do to reduce the waste that that poses and to stop all this trash that is coming out of lunchrooms?
The essential questions in our research that kind of went through is how can we recycle more bottles and other classes to increase the amount of waste in the school? What foods can we recycle? Now, to me, I don't think you can recycle foods, but they can be composted to make up to rich, clean soil. What can we do about the waste that we can't recycle? Well, if it's not composted and it's not biodegradable, it would go into the waste bins, which is just regular trash bins. How can we get this school involved with recycling? We begin to involve by building a lot of bins with sections like paper and plastic bottles to have all sorts.
Every day, PDS throws away fifteen full trash bags. Fifteen percent of that trash could be recycled. In a PDS career, we throw away 200, 28,000 trash bags. Most of it is, just like you have on the table, containers, wrappers, and things that can easily be recycled and saved. This is a graph that shows how much goes out of the cafeteria. So fifteen pounds goes out every single day and in a month, we throw away 570.
Not including the weekends?
Not including the weekends. And then in a year, not including summer and holidays, we throw away 5,700 pounds of trash. And in nine years, a PDS career, which is not considered with the summer and holidays, we throw away 51,300 pounds of trash.
Recycling means to reuse some of the potential trash that will end up in landfills. Many items can be, end up throwing away that are also recyclable, such as plastic bottles, containers, paper, wrappers, and many other things. Food scraps can't be recycled, but they can be composted. Our cap, our bin will look like with three sections, composting, recycling, and bottle bricks, which is non-biodegradable products. Each bin will be color-coded and contain pictures and/or labels so people can know which items they can put in the bins. There'll be a bar designed like a salad bar where you can put your tray and slide it so it'll be easier. The fifth grade students will see that the food and paper waste is taken to the composting bin and the dry waste that is non-biodegradable will be compacted into bottle bricks, which are water bottles with non-biodegradable products in it.
So what our idea is, is that usually when you think of recycling, you think of.
Just plastic bottles.
Taking it to a plant and have it compacted and reused. But our idea of recycling is that we take stuff that would be thrown away and we put it into places that could be reused. So our group is helping the other groups. And this is a bar that we are going to place the trash so it can go to each area. And one will be trash, one will be compost, and one will be for the bottle brick group. And it's going to be four feet in width and seven feet long. And each individual trash can will be fifty-five gallons and will be two feet by two feet, so two feet squared. There will be three inches in between each trash bin and the edge of the overall container that's holding the trash cans. There'll be an extra foot here that will be used as a tray slide so we're not having to hold the trays and go down the line and put each thing in the desired container. By the way, we're going to use eight by four, eight by four sheets of plywood that will be pressure-treated and free of stain.
So it would all lead up to $311.97, not including paints and paint brushes. And we're also going to buy hinges so if like, let's say, sandwich boxes can't fit in the holes, you can open it up and just put it in there.
And this is how we're going to cut it. You have a plain eight-by-four sheet plywood and you cut it two feet down all the way to the bottom and then you cut it three feet long, which is the same height this is going to be. And so then that, we have our four sides for each trash can. So we'll have to have three of these to make all three trash cans. And then this extra right here will be that tray slide right there. So if we need three, we'll have an extra piece of this and that will be used for the bottoms so the trash won't be going down to the floor. We're using money so that we can use to build this recycling station so that we can fit trash, composting, and bottle bricks all in one. The locations, if we don't put wheels on it, will be placed near the SK microwave and by the 4th and 6th grade area where the trash cans are now. We'll have two keepers who regularly attend it and make sure that all the trash is taken out and taken to the desired place.
We usually think that school recycling wouldn't make a difference. We thought that if one school started recycling, it wouldn't make that bigger difference in the world.
But now we know that if everyone works together, schools can make a huge impact on the world and can really change things that go out of the cafeteria that are being wasted.
This is the composting opening slide of them, from your garbage to our gardens. This is what we throw away every day in the cafeteria. With composting, this amount can be reduced.
Essential questions that guided our research. What can PDS do to go green? How can the whole school compost together? Why do we need composting at PDS? How will this change PDS? How do we make compost bins? How can PDS improve as a whole through composting? What is compost? Compost is created when green and brown materials mash together and decompose over time. Decomposing is when two different groups form one and break down over time together. When the material's finished, the result is fresh, healthy, and rich soil. This soil is called compost.
This is how you compost. First, you need a dry spot and then you get your materials. It's dry or moist and your materials will be food scraps, your greens and your browns, cardboard, this will be your browns, and greens will be food and organic material. So you would put that all together in a bin, a composting bin, which we'll talk about later. And then you get your worms, which will be red wiggler worms, and that's the best kind you can use. You get those in there, about a pound of bin, and they'll do all the work. They eat that up and make that into compost.
Using red wiggler worms speeds up the process by about a year. Here's another look at compost. To the far left, you see a top view. This is what our compost will most likely look like, except it will be much more in the bin. To the far right is just an example of the side view, but our compost at PDS will not look like this for if the greens are at the top, it will cause the whole campus to stink up. What can we put in our compost? Many people just think they can throw anything they have lying around the house in their compost, but this is not true. The main items that PDS produces that can be put in the compost are fruit and veggie scraps, tea bags, coffee grounds, paper towels, and napkins, certain types of paper, rolled bread, crackers, rice, and in some cases, pipes.
Like I said, these worms will do all the work once you put them into the compost. You don't have to do anything else and they will get all that good brown and green materials and put that into precious soil that we can use again and again for more food.
And the worms repopulate very easily because they're red wiggler worms and this is, we do not know why this is, but it will definitely help us save lots of money.
These are the blueprints for decompost bins that we hope to be able to make. We will have five of them. Three of them will be a volume of sixteen cubic feet and two of them will be a volume of twenty-four cubic feet. Over time, we figured out that one cubic foot equals a pound. And over the research, PDS each day has ninety pounds of waste and this would hold ninety-five pounds of waste. So just in case we had fewer pounds, it would hold.
The entire cost overall will be about $136.18.
This is what the bin will look like when we are finished creating them or making them, but they won't exactly look like them.
This is just to give you a picture of what it could look like. This is what we are hoping to make Miss Trent's room. We could turn this and remodeling PDS into our garden instead of just a plain old roof. The plants on it would get plenty of sunlight and it would be a really nice learning experience. But if we cannot put all the compost here, we will put it in our early childhood butterfly garden where it can easily be admired by many. Bottle bricks. A little bit of a bottle. By Kyle. Jack. William. And Spencer.
At PDS, most of our waste is going straight to the garbage can. But we can change that by using non-biodegradable materials and stuffing them into bottle bricks. As you see that, when you can, if it's compact enough, for after a while, the trash will mold to the shape of the bottle and make it as hard as a brick, hence the name bottle brick. And if we're spending all this money on food and the wrappers that will end up just going to a landfill and harming the environment, why don't we keep that and change, turn it into stuff that can help the environment and save money?
This is some of the data on how long it takes for different bottle brick materials to decompose. A tin can takes 100 years.
An aluminum can can take 500 years.
A plastic six-pack ring can take 450 years.
And a plastic joke can take a million years.
Styrofoam cups and lot flowers are either unknown, well, they're unknown to us now, or just forever.
The essential questions that led us to bottle bricks. How can we make a difference and not just waste problems, but humanity also? And what can we do with our non-biodegradable waste prevented from filling up in landfills? Ways we can fix those problems?
We can build one bottle brick. That gets more people to do it. And let's, us focus on composting and that's where team composting comes in. All together, we reduce the amount of trash in landfills and reduce the amount of notches in the bin.
How bottle bricks work? Bottle bricks are bottles filled with trash. Over time, the trash will harden to the shape of the bottle and pack down, it'll just make it all solid inside so it's as hard as a brick. And with these bottles, you can make furniture recycling bins, which is actually what we're going to do. And there's even a building made out of them here. It's like an office and it, they just kind of put like chrome or something on it so it looks good. And in Africa, people are making houses of just mud and bottle bricks.
This is how to make a bottle. So this is a gallon trash bag and twenty-four ounces. All the trash doesn't consist of any water or food, so it's all washed. And we actually, on the rock, put right outside, Philip, a gallon trash bag with trash like that one is, and pour water in it and then shake it around so it will be cup, it takes all the food out and then dump it out, the like, kind of a thing. So it's get all the trash. And then we put it in, it's type in, we just push it and it empty. A full gallon container of bottle, gallon trash bag, fits in two twenty-four ounces of your bottle.
And this is our formula for a bottle brick for each person and this will lead us to conquering those problems. You get the bottle plus the trash and then if you add the community to it, you'll get bottle bricks and maybe even houses. These are materials for building.
Fourteen bottles of flex seal, bottle bricks, and then cement to hold our bin together. The rounding cost in total to make one recycling bin leaves us seventy-one dollars, three hundred dollars.
And the reason we have the flex seal bottles is that it's like rubber in a can so you can spray it on the outside so if somebody accidentally hits it, they don't get scraped by concrete or anything so it doesn't deal with it. This is kind of our raised jug.
Jug, dump, junk. Thank you for taking time out of your day to come watch our project-based learning presentation on composting, recycling, and making bottle bricks. Do you have any questions?
So you just jammed stuff into these bottles until, now that was a lot of trash that went in there. So somebody takes it, just pushes it in and crams it down and then you end up with all that in that one bottle, right?
Yes. And this one isn't finished because it has a lot of air pockets.
And it's really big.
Even if people don't get the contact raised that week, be the ones that have to stuff it in there.
Tell me, though, can you, as you put the things into the bottle brick, there's a process first where you separated out the food and other things and how's it, that's, was that what you had, when I saw Hanging from the playground equipment the other day?
A couple of you designed that.
Would you tell us, because I'm not entirely clear, would you sort of walk us through that again? I don't make sure I've got a good understanding of that part of it.
So there are these two snack bins that were in our rooms that we're using to collect the trash.
Those are the crates, sort of.
Yes. And they had little holes in them, about this big. So we would fill up the trash bag with the trash, then could fill it up halfway with water. And then since the tire screen's out there, we would put it on there and have one person run with it. So and we push it around so the water.
And then, and we would kind of rope it together, the two snack crates like on top of each other so that both handles would be like right next to each other. And then we would stuff the trash in through those handles because they're like this big. And once we got that, we would just push it for a while and then it'd be dry. And if we wanted to, we can like catch it and kind of shake it to, if there isn't, it's just gathering up on one piece. Or we can flip it and then when we push it, it'll deal with them.
So if you don't build a fence out of these things or a wall or something, then they just come pick them up and take them off as garbage. But you compacted everything so it's a lot less garbage than it would be, is that what they're like? But you built a fence somewhere around here, right? That picture that, that brick wall or whatever it was?
Oh, we didn't build that, we found that.
That's an example of, we're not building anything with these, these.
We're going to build a recycling bin out of them as our project.
Is there any potential for where, you ever thought about where you would send them once we build that? And other places we could, are there places to donate them for building, like you mentioned in the?
We can send them to like to Africa and.
And to inspiration groups, an organization that uses them to build houses.
And then we could use them to help other groups like Robert's group. He had, they were, in the beginning, we were planning on maybe using bottle bricks instead of the wood to build it, but we realized that we didn't have enough people to like build enough of them, so we didn't. But if we did, like over time, built enough of them, we could make a compost bin or something too.
And with Jack saying it takes a lot of them to build Robert's imprint, it takes 450 to build ours.
And it's ours, it's just going to be a, I don't know, we used graph paper, which is like square in each thing and instead of doing like one square equals like six inches or something, we did each square equals one bottle brick. And so it was five i, and I think that was like what, this i?
This i.
Somewhere around there. And then it was three y's so you could put, leave a space out for a handle so you could pick it up and.
And that would, where would that be located?
Probably right next to the recycling bins that there are now.
Guys, y'all want to critique your presentation?
Please.
First of all, it's a great project and I commend you guys for doing this. This is very creative thinking and something I'm really glad to see you guys doing. You, it's, you guys are the ones that are going to solve these problems, okay? And, you know, we have a huge issue with garbage and we got to solve that and. But let me, as far as the presentation itself, first of all, you don't have to shake everybody's hand when you come in. That's a very nice touch and it's a personal touch and I liked it, I enjoyed meeting everybody like that. But you don't have, and especially in a bigger boardroom, I'll just go in and get to where you're going to be and then you'll start your presentation from that. And then maybe after it's over, if you want to have a personal touch, you go by, meet everybody. Because I, you know, people like the personal touch, but you don't have to do that on the, on the beginning of the presentation, okay? Second thing, slow down just a little bit on the slides, okay? Because there's a lot of stuff to read and you've got to give people time to read it if you want them to read the slides. So maybe you slow, everybody has a tendency in a presentation to talk too fast. It's just human nature. So slow down just a little bit your presentation, okay? Second thing, speak a little louder. So sometimes, you know, there's some background noise, you know, just make sure you're speaking louder. Look people in the eye. Don't look down at the ground and don't look off into spaces. You know, try to look at people around the room, let them, you know, get eye contact with them. The, you got into a lot of detail on the bins. What happens, you don't need that amount of detail. The concept about the bins and all that is what you need to focus on. If you get into describing the size of the bins and all that, you start losing people. They can't keep up with all that detail. Stay up here, not down here. You're trying to make a point about something that you want to accomplish that's up here. It's a big idea and it's up here. They don't need all the details, that's your problem. You're, you're the guys that are going to deal with the details. And then finally, and you can comment on it after the presentation, have a comment about what can we do before it turns into garbage? In other words, how should we all be thinking about how not to create garbage? Give somebody a thought about that maybe as part of what you're doing so that they leave going, you know, something, maybe I don't have to create all this garbage I'm doing. Give them a thought about that. And you may have done that in the presentation, I might have dismissed it, but, but anyway, that's, that was a great presentation. I commend you on the project and I'm excited about it. I mean, fifty-one thousand bags in a career over here. I mean, Lee, what have you been doing?
Look around, the way we're eating, you know, we're, people are very sensitive about what we have. Our food packaged in water. And I would just say, boys, you all did a great job. Really proud of the work that you've done. You used a lot of different thinking skills, just communicating well and so forth. I guess the main piece of advice that I would have would be to sort of be able to share the presentation at some point. What is the thing, what is the action step that you want us to take? So do you want, do you want the schools say, hey, we want to, you know, we want the school to provide this amount of money or this amount of space? Or what is it exactly that you want us to do, if anything? Because that's what, you know, in any presentation, usually there's a call to action. You want them to, the person you're selling to or talking to to do something for you. And so make sure that you communicate that maybe at the beginning and middle and at the end as well just so it's real clear on what you want us and the school to do. But yeah, this was a great, great presentation. I'm just so proud of what you're all doing. I've learned a lot from it. It makes me really think about how can we do better as a school and so forth, you know, your all's great work.
I agree, it was excellent presentation, boys. I thought for the most part, everybody spoke clearly. That's very important when you're speaking to people, y'all did well with that. The one thing I would ask you to think more about doing is when you're talking to a group, look at the group. Don't look at one person necessarily, but look at different people. Some of y'all came up and y'all kind of look down, that's very nat, that's very natural. When you're talking to a group, you haven't done a lot, what you want to do is make eye contact, you know, make, make regular eye contact. Some of y'all did that fairly well, some of y'all need to work on that. But overall, everybody, I thought, spoke, spoke for the most part clearly, for the most part. You spoke, I thought, slow, you can slow it down a little bit, I agree. But you were easy to follow, I thought that was done well. My own, I'm curious how much garbage we throw away. Popcorn shrimp, I bet if we get a popcorn shrimp, they'd be a sale on. I just find personal preference about, I would ask Coach Smith about that, how many pounds of popcorn shrimp bring up? It's a lot, so just curious about that. But boys, excellent job, excellent job, really. I'm grateful, it's great, commend all of y'all. Well done, well done.
I would echo, I guess, what everybody said, I thought that was terrific. I really enjoyed it. And I think the important part in changing the world is changing yourself first and the people around you. And you really generated an excitement in what you believe in and what you think is a great idea. And if you can change, if you can really do a good job of changing the little environment around you, sometimes people pay attention to that and that gets publicity, which then, so you do this, it gets on the news locally, then that inspires some other schools to do it. So you can be a model for things. This is, I think, just a great example of that. You gave, I mean, I guess to be a little different, I sort of enjoyed a lot of the specifics because you asked some crucial questions and you used a lot of detail to answer them. And I think that really is true. I think Mr. Burns's point is a very good one because whenever you go to someone and you want to do something, you do need to be exact in what you want them to do for you. So when you think about this as a model for some sort of business proposal later on, I'm not so much in business, but occasionally you have to be able to ask for things and people want, people don't always want to give it to you. We want you guys to succeed. Everybody in this room wants you guys to, to, to learn and to get what you want to do and to change the world, starting right here. That won't always be the case in every presentation that you made later on in business. So you want to be very precise about what you want them to do for you. And I loved it, and you went into the detail about how much of it costs and so forth. And so eventually someone is going to say, well, who's going to pay that and how do we, how do we want to do that? So that's something to think about when you, when you kind of make a proposal. And again, the movie was terrific, that was a nice touch. I know everybody had, had great touches in the presentation, but explaining it as you, so I thought it was really, really a great job.
If I could add one more thing, I think by having a bottle brick here, that was really helpful. Because if I, I mean, anytime you can see something and touch something, that's a, that's a great idea. So that, that really brought it home to me.
So that's what I would say to you. I'd already given them the critique this morning, but if you're going to make this to the larger group, I want y'all to go back upstairs a little bit and brainstorm about how you at the end could kind of present the summary of, we want to do these three things. This is where we could locate them and this is how much it would cost. Because if you can have, like these gentlemen are saying, if you can have that summary at the end, that kind of makes it clear to everyone at the end what it is you're asking for. And I have another question. When you talk about fifth graders, they're going to be the ones to go into the cafeteria and make sure all of this is happening. Well, your fifth grade days are about, you're going to be sixth graders next year. So is your plan that as sixth graders, you'll carry this out because you're committed to it? Or is it your plan that this would be kind of a fifth grade thing with the fifth graders that PDS always took on? Have you thought about that?
We have and Ms. Trent's have talked to us about it, Ms. May has talked to us about it. And we decided.
it, and we decided that next year, we as sixth graders would be carrying it on, and if we still needed some time, we would pass it down to the next group of fifth or sixth graders.
Now I'm gonna ask you a question that doesn't really have to do with your presentation, that has to do with the way that you learned all of this. Those blueprints were awesome, the math you did, everything you did, amazing. So talk to me about the process. You did this in English class, you did this in math class. How, what, do you, it's a little different to learn with project-based learning, so what do you think about it? How did you think about this way of learning as opposed to kind of just a more traditional way of learning? They knew I was gonna ask them this.
We thought this was different.